And we're live in five, four, three, two.
Good evening. Welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. Ms. Hillbrook, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Delagoza.
I am present.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young.
Here.
Councilman Loughran.
Here.
Mayor Bocknight.
Here.
I'm not certain of.
Ms. Elise isn't here right now. Maybe she'll get in here a little bit late. If everyone will please rise for the pledge of allegiances and then a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right. Welcome, everybody. Mr. Garza, good to see you. Do you have any announcements and/or reminders?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. I do have a few reminders for you this evening. On behalf of Development Services, we want to remind the public that the active transportation master plan is a bicycle and pedestrian plan that aims to make it safer and more comfortable to walk and bike in Victoria. And we want to hear from you about your walking and bicycling experiences, routes, comfortability, and more. Residents can share information about their transportation needs and priorities by responding to the survey at victorietx.gov/atmp and clicking on public input. The deadline to respond is May 31st. The police department has a very exciting and fun event going on this weekend. It is the Casting with Cops, a free youth fishing event that's taking place from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. this Saturday, May 6th, at Sun Valley Ranch. Children ages 2 to 15 will have the opportunity to meet their local first responders. Officers will help children with baiting hooks, reeling in fish, and taking fish off the hooks. The event will have four one-hour time slots with a maximum of 50 participants per hour. Participants must register in advance by contacting the community engagement unit at 361-485-3808. And on behalf of CVB, I hope you all had a chance to see the bicentennial logo. That was unveiled last week and will be used to tie together events and initiatives in honor of Victoria's 200th birthday next year. The logo, which was developed by city staff with input from council and as well Madden Media, our consultant, is intended to reflect the city's history. And so hopefully you get a chance to view that. On behalf of the CVB, they're also soon will be announcing the tacos and margaritas trail this Friday. You should have some goodies in front of you. There you go, associated with that. But that technically will come out this Friday, May 5th, and the CVB will be out at the Cinco de Mayo Walk Party to promote the new trail. And so we're excited to see how that plays out. Hopefully you get to enjoy that. And that's all I have for this evening.
Great. Thank you. We're going to public and employee recognitions. I do have one item to add, but I'll put it at the end. So let's go ahead and go with the Public Service Recognition Week proclamation.
Whereas the people of the city of Victoria served every single day by public servants at every level in the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of government, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our community working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths to perform their jobs to the best of their ability. And whereas public servants, including military reserve personnel, police officers, firefighters, correction officers, doctors, nurses, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day to serve the people of the city of Victoria. And whereas public servants, including teachers, social workers, administrators, computer technicians, laborers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, provide the efficiency and integrity, the diverse services demanded of the government of the people of the city of Victoria. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And now therefore I, Jeff Bocknight, mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through 13th, 2023, as Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens of the city of Victoria encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of all the hardworking and deserving public employees of the city of Victoria, Texas.
Thank you. On behalf of all the employees, you know, this is a week that we, this will be our second year where we actually do quite a bit of events. And so next week, we'll be having events throughout the different departments. We'll be having breakfast at different departments. We'll be having a big lunch next Wednesday, just to show our appreciation to our employees. Our employee helping employees, committee of employees, that's a lot of employees, have helped organize the week-long events. And so we're excited for the opportunity to just do a little bit, take some time out of our day as the management team of the city to thank our employees. We obviously wouldn't be able to do what we do and enhance livability without them. And this is just a small token of our appreciation. So thank you for the proclamation. We'll be sure to send you invitations to all these events as well, by the way.
The next proclamation is for Small Business Week. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. And whereas from the storefront shops that anger Main Street to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the cornerstones of our nation's promise. And whereas small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and a passion for what they do. And whereas when we support small businesses, jobs are created and local communities persevere, preserve their unique culture. And whereas because the country's 30 million small businesses create nearly two out of three net new jobs in our economy, we cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur economic growth in America without discussing ways to support our entrepreneurs. And whereas the president of the United States has proclaimed Small Business Week every year since 1963, and to highlight the programs and services available to entrepreneurs through the U.S. Small Business Administration and other government agencies. And whereas Victoria, Texas supports and joins in the national effort to help America's small businesses do what they do best, grow their businesses, create jobs, and ensure that our communities remain as vibrant tomorrow as they are today, now therefore I, Jeff Bocknight, mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 30th through May 6th, 2023, as National Small Business Week and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants through National Small Business Week and throughout the year.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Young. I'm the director at the UHV Small Business Development Center. Our center has been in the Victoria community since 1985 and has helped and supported tens of thousands of small businesses in the Crossroads area, including Victoria. I appreciate the recognition and the highlight for Small Business Week. A little bit about our center. We provide one-to-one consulting to small business owners looking to start a business and small business owners looking to expand their operation. We work with them through the lifeline of their business or the life cycle of their business, whether it be through success or tragedy, natural disasters, or most recently, health disasters. We are there and support them. All of our services are at no cost to the business owner, which is great for their pocketbook and their plan. In addition, we provide workshops and training, not just to our clients, but to anybody who would like to attend. And we are celebrating Small Business Week with a host of workshops that can be found on our UHV website that are kind of specific to a few industries that we don't get to highlight too often. So I encourage everybody to check it out. And lastly, we're able to do what we do because of the businesses in the Victoria and Crossroads area. In addition, our funding hosts or funding sources, who are the SBA, the state of Texas, and UHV allows us to do what we do at no cost to the business owner. So I guess on behalf of everybody who was in the picture earlier, I thank you for the proclamation and thank you for allowing us to do what we do in the city.
Thank you, Lindsay.
So you're up already, so.
Already. Good evening, mayor, members of council, Mr. Garza. It gives me great honor and pleasure to introduce Mr. Sam Vance with the Texas EMS for Children's Program. He's here to talk a little bit about the program and present an award to the Victoria Fire Department and the city of Victoria.
Thank you, chief, and thank you all for having the opportunity, giving me the opportunity to join you this evening. My name's Sam Vance, and I'm the manager of the Texas Emergency Medical Services for Children State Partnership Program. The EMS for Children Program, or EMSC, is a federally funded program through a grant from the Health Resources and Services Administration, or HERSA, and it's the only federally funded program that's solely focused on improving pediatric emergency care in the prehospital and hospital setting. The program funds and supports pediatric emergency care initiatives and projects in all 50 states and eight U.S. territories. The mission of the EMSC program is to ensure that all children and adolescents receive appropriate emergency health care when it's needed, regardless of where they live, attend school, or travel. And it ensures that pediatric services and resources are well-integrated into both EMS systems and hospital emergency departments. Baylor College of Medicine in Houston is the site of the Texas EMSC offices and is working in partnership with the largest children's hospitals in Texas, their affiliated colleges of medicine, and representatives of the Texas Department of State Health Services. Through this collaboration, the EMSC State Partnership Texas has created the infrastructure to assess and achieve defined EMSC performance measures. In addition, the EMSC State Partnership in Texas works tirelessly to improve education, research, and pediatric prehospital care. One of the various ways the program does this is through our EMS recognition program. The EMS recognition program is a multi-phase program for EMS agencies that wish to establish programs and standards to improve their capabilities to deliver care to pediatrics. This recognition places a spotlight on the delivery of high-quality emergency medical care for children, focusing on the unique needs of critically ill or injured pediatric patients and the challenges faced by EMS professionals in meeting those needs. This recognition also provides us with an opportunity to bring together the EMS agency and their local community to focus attention on illness and injury prevention and raise awareness about issues important to the continued development and improvement of EMS and trauma systems relating to children. And it helps us raise awareness about safety and prevention and the ongoing need to improve and expand specialized care for children in the prehospital setting. Organizations who successfully complete the process receive a certificate as well as decals to affix to their ambulances to recognize their accomplishment and commitment to Texas's youth. As mentioned, this is a multi-phase program, and it consists of a bronze, silver, and gold level. Bronze being the fundamental phase, with silver and gold levels going above and beyond what is currently required for ambulance licensure in Texas. In June of last year, we revised our program to reflect current national EMS for Children performance measures, prehospital pediatric readiness guidelines, and new recommended equipment list for ground ambulances. This made the process more in-depth and frankly, quite a bit harder than what it was in the past. Battalion Chief Martin and the Victoria Fire Department is the first department in the state of Texas to complete the recognition process under these revised guidelines. So I'm proud to announce that the Victoria Fire Department has successfully completed this process and has achieved the gold level of recognition. So the Texas EMS for Children State Partnership would like to recognize their accomplishment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Thank you, mayor and council, Mr. Garza, for all the support. We couldn't do that without the support and providing the things we need. Also want to recognize Chief Mark Martin, who worked tirelessly and almost single-handedly to get this program through the finish line and be the first in Texas to do that. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all's leadership. Good job.
So, last but not least. There you go. All right. Last but not least, I do want to, in case you missed it, but we had some big news that came out this week, right, yesterday, which of course was the announcement of the promotion of Deputy Chief Chuck Young to police chief that'll be effective in essence in a couple of weeks. We will plan a promotional sermon to take place on Monday, May 15th. And so everybody will be invited to that, be on the lookout for that. I do want to put him on the spot, though, and have him come up for a quick minute, because it is a very exciting time for the police department, obviously with the new Public Safety Headquarters building and just the improvements in the reduction of crime, usage of technology, you know, all the things that Deputy Young has been, Deputy Chief Young has been super involved with. And so we're very excited for him to take the reins for the department. And so I'll put you on the spot to say a few words. Congratulations.
Everybody, thank you, council mayor, city manager's office. Thank you for the opportunity. I mean, I don't have a speech prepared or anything like that, but I'm probably the most humble guy in the building. I'm very thankful for the opportunity to do this. So the men and women of the department, I'm excited to stand by them. There's a lot of great work that's been done on this department. The men and women of the department are fantastic. They do a wonderful job. They've accepted me, and I'm very humble and very thankful for that. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And we actually have one more.
Yep.
Yeah. So I apologize for that. Thank you, Allison, for reminding me about that. Team purple, by the way. And so Christie will come up and help do her presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before we present our beautification award for May, I wanted to do a quick recap of our latest cleanup, our Earth Day cleanup last weekend that we do in partnership with TexDOT. This is the one where we clean up locations all over town. We, you can see our numbers there. We cleaned up 23 locations. We had 262 volunteers, and we picked up 203 bags of trash, plus a lot of really large items, like shopping carts and plush animals and those sort of thing, pallets. So I am very thankful for all the support we get from all of our many partners as well. As you know, we're able to feed all of our volunteers, and it takes a community to do that. So I wanted to make sure we thank our sponsors there as well. And here are our winners. These are the lucky ones that collected the most or found the most unusual items. We had Team Four at the Loop, led by Kayla Massey. She's with our library. You can see her right there in front with her team. And we had some really crazy items. We got lots of them. But the one that won out was the sheep-like plush animal. That's all we can call it. It's there on the cone. So that was our mascot. So we had a lot of, lot of very interesting finds, a lot of great involvement from the community, more and more groups coming out. And I want to thank everybody for coming out and making our Victoria that much better. And now I want to get to our beautification award. And I will introduce Meredith Byrd, our board chair of Keep Victoria Beautiful, to do the honors.
Thanks, Christie. And good evening, mayor and council. I always love getting up here in front of all of you to present this award. It just gives me lots of joy. So yes, as board chair of Keep Victoria Beautiful, first of all, I'd like to encourage the community to go to the Keep Victoria Beautiful website and find our business beautification award nomination form. And I encourage everybody to be on the lookout for businesses around Victoria that embody our principles of, you know, making this a great place to live. And so I encourage everybody to submit nominations as often as you like. We love to see them coming in. So for our June award, we have today with us Cimarron Junction on, at the corner of Navarro and Zach Lence. This location has, it's been Cimarron Junction for about nine years, and they serve roughly 1,000 customers daily. This is an outstanding example of the work that it takes to keep a busy property looking great. Number one, their location at the corner of Navarro and the Loop, that's very, very busy. It's along Victoria's, you know, Victoria's busiest thoroughfare. Like I said, they serve upwards of 1,000 customers a day, and they're a convenience store. They're a business that just, there's a lot of in-and-out, lots of people buying products, and there's the potential for lots of litter to be generated. And so for Cimarron Junction to have this fantastic showing like they do, it really speaks to the effort that the business, the staff, put into keeping their property looking as nice as it does. And so tonight, it's my honor to present the business beautification award to Mike Ross of Cimarron Junction.
Thank you very much to mayor and council. Greatly appreciate it. Cimarron Junction is owned by New Distributing, John New and family. We've been in business here in Victoria since the 50s. We greatly appreciate serving the city, and we greatly appreciate the service that we can provide to the citizens of Victoria as well as to the town itself. So thank you very much for the recognition. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And to continue the theme, I have one more, too. I want to recognize a group of outstanding and exceptional young leaders in Victoria. Last fall, Emily Dickinson and Katie Jane Kopecky came to me and said, would you please help support us in starting a mayor's youth council? I challenged those two young ladies and said, I don't have a lot of extra bandwidth for my time, but I'd gladly help y'all get it off the ground. Y'all please do a bunch of the legwork. And they stepped up to the plate, got applications out to all the schools. They got, they took them all in, went through the applications, kind of got our first meeting kicked off for it. They've been very instrumental in getting the group going. We had initially about 20. We dropped a few along the way, but we met twice a month since October, pretty much. We focused on some issues that we talked about up here a lot, library books when it was a hot topic, talked to them about it and made sure they understood what was going on, got their opinions. And we've had guest speakers come in. Representative Morrison's gone to speak with them, as has Congressman Cloud. They've also had the opportunity to see some city departments, and they went to the fire station. And it was funny, I think we had a couple of tag-alongs that just really wanted to see the fire station, but really appreciate the fire department taking the time to go through everything with them, gave them a miniature CPR class. They got to get on, you know, try on gear, check out everything that the ambulances carry. I think it's been worthwhile, not only for them, but for me, to listen to them and interact with them. And I really appreciate everyone that took their time and participated in it. And if y'all just give me a moment, I'm gonna go to the other microphone and present them with some certificates and some letters. All right. First up, we have Thomas Copeland. I'm gonna call him out fast. Caitlin Kohanik. Thanks a lot for being there. You can stay up here if you want, or you can sit back down.
Yeah, we'll do a big round of applause.
Yeah. Lisa Do. Lisa, thank you. Mia Mabry, who's one of the officers. Hyrel Vazir. Josh Henry. And then we have Katie Jane Kopecky, vice president, and Emily Dickinson, our president. And then we also had one other officer that's not here tonight, Natalie Cook. And Emily, if you'd like to say a couple of words, and I also want to say thank y'all all so much. Y'all have been wonderful.
Hi. Like Mayor Bocknight said, I'm Emily Dickinson. I'm the current president of the mayor's youth council. I just wanted to say, we had a great first year getting this club started, and it wouldn't have been possible without Mayor Bocknight, the city, and all of our participants to have this opportunity available. And we just had a great time learning and serving from our community. I really look forward to see what this club can grow into and get done next year. So thank you.
I also want to say a special thanks to Keisha Smith. She added some much-needed help for me. Without her, this wouldn't have been nearly successful as it was. And also, these, these young leaders, they developed their own service projects. They got food donations for the food bank. They got a good tour of the food banks. They all have an understanding of what goes on at the food bank, and they also got toiletries together for Perpetual Help Home. Is that right?
South Texas Children's.
South Texas Children's, I'm sorry. But they did all that by themselves and really appreciate them and can't say enough good things about them. So thank y'all. And next year, we'll be reaching out to the schools again. Keisha's developed a flyer so that we'll get to the, the schools here shortly, so that we can get applications as soon as school starts next year for next year's mayor's youth council. So we'll keep it going. All right. Thank y'all. With that, we're gonna close public and employee recognitions, go to items from council. Nothing? All right. We'll go to citizens communication. Mr. Von der Aa.
Good evening, mayor, council. I just wanted to thank Keep Victoria Beautiful for what they did, and the captain of the Salvation Army for giving everyone free donuts, and Chick-fil-A for the free Chick-fil-A burgers, and HEB for the free chocolate-covered cashews. And also, I wanted to talk about the Central Appraisal District. A lot of people have been complaining about the high property taxes, and they're supposed to be independent audit. I thought it was supposed to start on May the 1st. Today's May the 2nd. I was wondering if someone could call them and talk to them about it, because some of the people there, they're not too happy about that audit. They, they don't want that audit. They, I guess they don't think the $150,000 is worth it. But it is supposed to be a more detailed audit than the regular one from the controller. And I gave you something that has your name in it, Mr. Bocknight, like how you feel and stuff. But I also want to talk about when you're appraising stuff, it's not just the value of the property, it's where you live. You know, one famous real estate agent said, it's location, location, location. And, you know, if you're living in a trailer park where there's drugs and sex offenders and potholes all over the place, those prices should go down. Same with a regular neighborhood. Like, one of my neighbors, he was a sex- Like, one of my neighbors, he was a sex offender, and he's living with a four-year-old girl, and he just went to the penitentiary for burglary. They've given him four years. So I want to thank Zachary Miles, the ADA, and the Sex Crimes Unit, and the detectives, and the police officers for putting him away. And one of my neighbors has eight DWIs, and I'm wondering, why isn't he yet in prison? You know, I mean, if I'm on the jury, he's getting 99 years, so don't put me on the jury. But the trailer park owner, he's turned a blind eye to all the problems. We have potholes, and it looks like a big old swamp, and he's refused to take care of it. And I was wondering if someone from the city of Victoria could call him or fax him or talk to him about it and stuff, because it's a safety issue for the city and for him. And he's a prominent attorney, and he knows better to turn a blind eye to the crime in the trailer park and not to take care of it. And I would like for him to step up to the plate and take care of it, because so far, he hasn't. Thanks, and have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close Citizens Communication and go into the Consent Agenda.
Item D1 is the adoption amendments to the regular meeting held on April 18, 2023. Item D2 is a resolution approving a variance to Section 20-83A for the property located at 2513 North Navarro Street in order to allow for the reduction of a minimum distance required of commercial driveways intersecting public streets. Item D3 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Gary Middleton for representation and consulting services related to municipal water supply in the amount of $24,000. Item D4 is a resolution approving and designating the City Manager as the authorized official to approve fiscal year 2024 Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority grant, designating Sergeant Robert Rogers as the Program Director for the grant and designating Director of Finance Gilbert P. Reyna Jr., CPA, as the Financial Officer for the grant.
Thank you.
I move we adopt the Consent Agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Then we're into City Manager's Report. Development Services Annual Report.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. We forgot to highlight that we, you know, we didn't have regular items from Council, so expect a lengthy executive session.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is my second-ever annual report, so I'll try and make it brief. But to start with our mission statement, you know, we are in the business of regulating a lot of things, so we try and do that, you know, with a common sense approach and fairly inconsistently as possible, as evidenced by our mission statement. In Development Services, we have 26 full-time employees over four divisions, which includes GIS, planning, building permits and inspections, and code enforcement. So our budget this year, general fund, is about $2.3 million, and then we, of course, manage two federal grants. For this current fiscal year that we're in, we have our CDBG grant, which is allocated in our annual action plan, is $576,000. And then our NPO Metropolitan Planning Organization grant, which is budgeted through our Unified Planning Work Program, our UPWP document, is $207,000. We do have our funding for next year already that has been announced or awarded to us. And for CDBG, we will be back in June to talk about our annual action plan, and we were awarded $566,000, so a little bit less than this year. And then our NPO budget, our NPO budget, is jumping up to $358,000. And that's because every five years, we create what's called a Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It's the long-range transportation plan for the Victoria County or NPO boundary. And so every year, we save $50,000, stockpile that money, and then five years, we have a really big NPO budget to pay for that plan. So the first division I'd like to talk about is GIS. The most exciting thing that's happened this year is that we just got our new aerials delivered. So, you know, we're on a three-year flyover cycle. So the green picture is our current aerials that are published, and the brown picture is what we have delivered. They will be published on our website by the end of the month on our GIS. You'll see that they're brown because we actually flew them earlier this year. If you remember, we always are in a partnership with the appraisal district, and they really wanted to fly them the week after Christmas. And so I think it's very interesting to tell just a month or two difference in how green our community looks. So that's really exciting. And I chose this area because you can see Salem Crossing in 2020 wasn't quite built out, and you can see all the new rooftops on the bottom image. GIS is just always busy updating our layers, making sure, and working with all the different departments to make sure that their needs are met, and then, of course, publishing so much data and information out on our GIS portal. Planning Services has kind of two functions. It's our long-range planning, and also is really involved in development review and development planning. So, you know, we're working on the Unified Development Ordinance. It's been kind of quiet, and there's been a bit of a hiccup. Our consultants delivered our latest module, which had all of the non-conformity section in it, and, you know, what are the different triggers, and it just really didn't work. And so we sent that back to them. So there's been a little bit of a lull. That was delivered in early March. They've promised me that by the end of this month, we'll have a new module, and we'll pick it back up. And I think that that's really the hardest part of the UDO, is that non-conformity redevelopment section. Our current ordinance works really great for new development. What they gave me worked really great for new development. So it's just, it's a hard part of planning to tackle and how far you push on redevelopment and non-conformities. So they're back to the drawing board, and hopefully, we'll have some movement on that by the end of the month for our Planning Commission meetings. Last year, we had held 11 meetings. We're so far eight into it this year. We had 50 predevelopment meetings last year, and we're already at 50 this year, which is great. Sometimes those predevelopment meetings don't really come, a project doesn't come to fruition throughout it, but it's a really great tool to give to people so that they know exactly what they're getting into, explain our process, so that we do have smooth projects moving forward. And then we have two great recognitions for our employees. Celeste Machaka, our Planning Manager, earned her Certified Flood Plane Management Certificate and is now CFM. And then Maggie Bergeron earned her American Institute of Certified Planners certification, which is, I'm really proud of her. It's kind of a hard, hard thing to do. And I think the last time we had two AIC planners on staff was when John Kaminsky retired. So it's been a while. So Planning is also responsible for demographics. The Texas Demographics Center has been publishing that we are seeing a slight dip in our population. And if you read their methodology, they're really putting it towards building permits, building activity, which you'll see in our building permit data that completely corresponds. But good news is Danielle Economic Development Team have a software that they use, that a lot of retailers use. And when we pull data from that, they're not really showing what the Texas Demographics Center is publishing, so they're still showing our population being 66. So the word's not out there yet that we're kind of at a stagnant point. And if you look at our long-term projections, you know, it's shown that we're not going to remain sort of flat. So we have not done any annexation in the last couple of years, and that's really thanks to the state legislature. They continue to kind of push annexation and disannexation bills, so we don't really foresee any annexation unless it's voluntary moving forward. But in the UDO, we are, of course, proposing to require annexation with connection to our utilities. So we imagine future annexation will be tied to future development. In the Planning Division, you know, we have the two federal grants. Our CDBG grant is all tied to HUD data and income limits. So you can see, this is the low-to-moderate income limits that we're currently operating under, and this data will change in June. So whenever we, hopefully, when we have our annual action plan and give our CDBG recommendations, we'll have a new chart to show exactly where we are when it comes to income data. So for our Community Development Block grant, we, of course, every year complete our annual action plan. We award and allocate our plan year funds, which is through that annual action plan, and those are awarded to public service activities, which, of course, the grant cap's at 15%, and then public facilities. We also complete our CAPR, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is basically your annual action plan says what you're gonna do and how you're gonna spend the money, and then your CAPR just validates that you did what you said you were gonna do and shows how you spent that money. And so the deadline for our 2023, for next year, our annual action plan grants was due on Monday, so we are kind of reviewing all the applications. We did, I will tell you that our intent-to-apply application that opened up last month, we had $233,000 in public service activity requests for $86,000 that were allowed to award out. Now, of course, that's why we have an intent-to-apply, so you can go talk to those agencies and kind of bring the expectations a little bit more down to reality and work through the plans and their programs. But that just tells you what a huge need there is. So currently, we have our plan year 2021 open, which was $627,000, and we had a goal of serving 226 citizens, and we served 280. Our current year plan year, which is in progress, we had a goal of serving 210, and we've served 212. And there's still quite a few public service agency programs open in the plan year 2022. In 2021, the only thing we have open still are the public facility projects, because those can kind of take a long time to work through. But the public service activities pretty much are finished within that year. And then a big, big shout-out to Vanessa Kaminsky's along here, Celeste Machaka, and Zach Wendell, our current Community Development Planner, for extending all of our CDBG CV funds, our COVID funds. We were the first city, entitlement city in our region, to spend all of our COVID funds. There are still cities that are sitting on hundreds of thousands of dollars in their awards, which, of course, makes it only harder to spend now that we're kind of coming out of the pandemic. So we're very proud that we were able to get that money out so quickly. A lot of CDBG's community engagement and involvement. You know, HUD really wants, really pushes the public participation and really requires it of us. And so with that, these are some of the agencies that CDBG staff attends, and we've attended 19 partnership meetings since October 1st. And they also participate in the point-in-time count that is held yearly. So the other federal grant is our Metropolitan Planning Organization. Again, we have a long list of required plans that we do every year, which is the budgeting, which is your Unified Planning Work Program, our Transportation Improvement Program, which is actual funded transportation projects that are letting within that timeframe, our yearly performance metrics, the 2022 Annual Listing of Projects, which is a list of all the projects that TechS dot let in the NPO region. We also are working on the Active Transportation Master Plan and 2050 Socioeconomic Forecast, which is basically economic census and economic and population data that all gets put into our travel demand model, which then turns around and informs our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And our travel demand model is really run by TechS dot, so we have to do the backend stuff, like socio-demographics. We turn all of that into TechS dot, and they review it. So our consultants have finished the report. It's been submitted to TechS dot. We have our first round of comments, and I think the NPO committee can look for a very exciting presentation on our Socioeconomic Forecast at their June meeting. We should have everything wrapped up from TechS dot by then. So we're currently working on our Active Transportation Master Plan. As you've heard, we've got the survey open. Staff, a group of us from Planning Division will be attending Walk Fest tomorrow night to hand out QR codes to encourage people to take the survey. Of course, this plan is focusing on non-motorized forms of transportation. We have received our existing conditions network and analysis, and that document is on the Active Transportation Master Plan's webpage. And we'll continue to gather stakeholder input through the end of the month. We actually have stakeholder meetings with some bike groups and focus groups scheduled for next week. And then the consultant will then go work on the report, and we'll have a draft, y'all, by the end of this fiscal year, beginning of next fiscal year. So our Development Center is all things building permits and inspections and development-related. We continue to focus on ICC certifications. We do not want to lose our ISO rating or slippiny, and so ICC certifications and education of our inspection staff is really critical to maintaining those ISO ratings. I have some other employees to recognize on that avenue. Eli Bressenio, he's our Assistant Building Official. He has one more module to complete before he gets the Certified Building Official designation, so he's getting really close. And then Corey Mullins, Abiel Ramos, and Jeff Allenson all earned their Residential Building Inspector, which is a really highly valued or highly credited certification with ICC in that ISO rating system, so we're really excited about that designation. And then Rick Madrid, of course, the Assistant Director and our current Building Official, does serve on ICC Code Development Committees for the Commercial Residential Section of the Energy Code, so things like hotels, apartments, the kind of residential but commercial uses. He's serving on that committee for the development of the next, the 2024 ICC codes. That's really good for us, because he'll be an expert. So this is the Development Review Team's activity for the last several years with our year-to-date. As you can see, we're kind of halfway, halfway, we're at the halfway point, and we're not quite at halfway numbers yet. So we are seeing a little bit of a decline, but nothing too drastic in some of our activity. And this is our overall permit activity. So you can see permits are actually, continue to increase. The value of construction really depends on the projects. If you have a very large, like multifamily or a very large kind of commercial, like a FedEx-type project, the value's going to be very high for that year versus a lot of smaller-type projects. You will see a drastic dip on our new construction, a number of homes in square footage. I will say the last several years have been very inflated because of the General Land Office homes that have been being constructed. And we're seeing a big slowdown in those General Land Office homes that people, you know, receive grants to have the General Land Office build new homes for folks after Hurricane Harvey. So, you know, it took a couple of years for the majority of those homes to kind of, for people, applicants, to get through the process, and those homes are starting to be constructed. So the last, I think, 2020, 2021, 2022 numbers are really inflated because of those GLA homes. So I think we're gonna see more like 2018, 2019 numbers moving forward. And this is just our permit activity in a pretty graph. The value of all permits, and of course, it's changed, too, because we no longer capture value for residential. If, back to residential, we do capture square footage now. You can kind of take an average. We've been averaging about $150 a square foot to kind of give you just a very generic number of what that value would look like. So some of our permit activity highlights is we continue to, you know, enforce the adopted 2021 building codes. We are ahead of many municipalities in adopting those 2021 codes. Our planner review timeline and our site planner review timeline, all of those are really held at 10 business days, which is a very fast turnaround compared to other cities. And we very rarely fall behind that. And we're just continuing to meet all those action plan items in the ISO, so that next time when they come, we won't have to have an action plan. We'll hopefully maybe even increase in our ISO rating. And then, of course, we have a lot of major commercial permits, and we also pulled out some major downtown permits for everybody to kind of get a sense of all the activity that's happening around town. And we also have long published our monthly activity report in our Planning Commission Packet. And then at the beginning of the month, Lila Foster, our longtime planning technician that retired this past year, would email out a spreadsheet with that month's permit activity that, again, would be published later in the month in the Planning Commission Packet. We took the opportunity to kind of reformat how we do that, and we have now combined those reports, and we're publishing them on the website at the beginning, within the first four days of the month. And we have created a notify-me option, so anybody that can subscribe to those, and then they get a link in their mailbox, every month, whenever, after we've posted and sent out the monthly development report. So I encourage everybody to go and subscribe to that in the notify-me section of the website. We also just recently created a notify-me for the quarterly action agenda. So the next quarterly action agenda, once it gets published, we'll be able to publish that out to those that have subscribed to that. And then the last division we have is Code Enforcement. So we also have some folks to recognize in that division. Stephen Solis was promoted from our Senior Code Enforcement Officer to our CEO Supervisor with the retirement of Grace Garcia. Christian Watts was promoted from CEO 2 to Senior Officer. And then with Grace leaving, we had a vacancy that we filled with Michelle Tyree. we filled with Michelle Tyree. She came from Colorado and had a lot of previous code enforcement experience. So she came in as a code enforcement officer, too, had to get her state of Texas licensing all taken care of. And once she was able to successfully do that, she was promoted very quickly to Senior Code Enforcement Officer. So as you know, we continue, we have continued for the last several years to separate our city and dedicate our resources to where we have two officers really working on nuisance abatements, and then two officers working on property maintenance, substandard buildings, and, you know, just really trying to address blight in neighborhoods. And then, we, our supervisor is there to just help in all aspects, difficult cases, and then, of course, do the supervisory duties. And we have continued to focus on priority areas of major affairs, and then around downtown Silver City and Queen City. So this is what our numbers are looking like. You'll see that we're continuing to drop, and you're going to see some pictures at the end. That's going to explain why our numbers are dropping a little bit, because we're really just focusing on harder cases, things that take a lot more effort. But I think the reward is much greater on those, even though they, they do take more time. We're also working with Ruby and the legal department on junk and abandoned vehicles. Junk and abandoned vehicles are very expensive and time-consuming. There's a lot of notification requirements. I think we keep the advocate in business with all of our notifications. So we're looking at anything we can do to really still follow state law, but reduce as much paperwork on that process as possible. So we're kind of been taking a hold because we spent a lot of money last year on junk So I want you to pay particular attention to 1007 Southeast and 1710 Lincoln. And so this is the kind of cases that our officers are working. And this is why it takes a little bit more time and effort. So this is the end results of, and you know, this takes months working with property owners to get to this point. And there's a lot more of these cases. The theater in downtown, I know, you know, there was a grant received on it, but that actually was initiated because code enforcement started a property maintenance case on it. So there's, you know, a lot more, there's a lot more pictures we probably could have put in before and afters. And they do take a lot more time. So that kind of, you know, doesn't make the caseload look as good. But I think that, you know, a picture is worth a thousand words. And if we can continue to get these types of successes, then we'll have some very beautiful neighborhoods. And that's all I have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Julie. Next up, an update on the Laurent Street underpass. And I think Christie and Daryl are going to tag team this one.
Yes. Okay, we are super glad to be here to be talking about Laurent Street. We've been talking about this for a little while. And to remind you, this was brought to the city manager's office by Councilmember Solis a while back. It ended up with Environmental Services. And we have put an RFQ out for this. Actually, we did this twice. We've learned a lot along this process. And we have now, we are now working with Up Art Studio out of Houston. And they have, they're the ones we're currently working with, design and project plan for this. The renderings that we've put out are, are designed by them. And so we are, we are looking to, in the next, in two weeks, we're looking for consensus from council so we can move forward on this contract with them moving forward, so we can get started on this. So what we wanted to do this evening is show you the final renderings. We put this out for public input, for public feedback. And then, we also had a committee of, of nine that got together and looked at this, considered public feedback. And so we have a recommendation for that, and some budget updates as well. So we can go. Sorry. So to, to show you what was first recommended by the committee, this was, this is one side of Laurent. So to, to reorient everyone, we're talking about under the railroad pass at Laurent Street, over by HEB, Rio Grande. So it's Rio Grande and Laurent, kind of right there where they come together. And there's two sides there. And so for one side, this was the, the one that was chosen there by the committee, including public input. Also, these themes were also put forward to the artist's team. We did a survey on that as well, and got some themes going about Victoria. And this was, was that one. For the other side, so this is the recommendation. The other one is wall two. This was option two. And it, it's, it's really hard to see all together because it's long. So that's why we chunked it out at the bottom, so you can see the pieces a little, a little more So I can go back to the one, the other options, if you want. I just don't want to confuse you. Because they, they're all very similar in color and style, of course. There's just small differences. So this one obviously has a little bit more of a music theme to it. We incorporated, you know, the elements of Victoria that people said stood out to them. And also, this one as well, you've got the, the DeLeon brand there, and you've got the ranching cowboy armadillo. We've gone, gone through multiple renditions of these in our committee to get it right. It, it, it takes a while. But let me show you the other ones, so we can remember these. These are the other ones, and they're slightly different. They have the same themes. If you notice, this one still has a music theme. And this is...
Does it say on the guitar?
And on the guitar, I believe it has an 1824 on the guitar.
But then what's it have on the, on the neck?
On the neck.
Or the very top of it?
It's probably the same.
You can see it more in, in the other one, the first one.
Let me, let me go back to the first one.
Right there by the silhouette of the...
I don't even remember what's on the, the top of the guitar, honestly.
I'm just, I guess I'd, like, somebody that knows something about a guitar to make sure that that's not a word that makes no sense.
Wrong. Does it say Victoria? I can't even see it.
It says gigum.
It says Victoria.
Oh, does it? Okay.
Okay. And then 18, we did put the 1824 in there. We were trying to make sure we got it. We got it in there. You know, this is meant to be a part of the bicentennial celebration as well.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, no. That's, that's, that's totally fine. What I would also like to do is, as part of this, getting this, this public art going, which will start, the plan is to start in June. It should be done easily by August, is the plan, now weather permitting. So it, we've got plenty built in. That's our plan, if we need to, to give them some more time. Up Art Studio is, is, one of the, the reasons they really stood out to us is they are experts at public engagement. And they, they're not just an artist that comes and does it. They're a complete team. And they do this all over Houston with murals and bring in artists locally and abroad to bring in really high quality, well-done, with a lot of local engagement. And that was important when we looked at doing this, that we really have a lot of local artist engagement and mentoring. And how do you do projects like this? How do we have artists here kind of get to this level to put out this kind of, of work and proposals? So what I wanted to do is bring up Claire Santiana. She's just going to talk just a minute about the, the local artist and public engagement piece. She's been working with Up Art Studio, and they've, they've started that process.
Christie, can we see the other options, too?
Yes. Okay, so which ones do you want me to go to again?
We haven't seen the other ones.
Okay. So this one is wall one, sorry about that, wall one, option two. This was the one that recommended by the committee. The one with the blue boxes are the ones recommended, by the way. This one was recommended for wall two, has a blue box. And then, the other two, this was wall one. And this one is wall two, for the other options. So I'm sorry. I apologize. I don't think I got to this one. So this one has, as you can see, it has a little bit of the similar ranching theme. It's got the brand. It's got some natural elements. It's got some different, it's got an aqua here. And although that looks like a hummingbird, hummingbirds don't eat fish. That's actually a kingfisher, and it's the wrong coloration for that species, we figured out. And that, if we were to do this one, if we are to do this one, that coloring will change slightly. But everyone calls it a hummingbird, and it's not a hummingbird. Okay, do you want me to go back to another one?
That could be dramatic.
They all start to look very similar. Okay, any other questions before I bring Claire up?
Yeah, it's very hard because of the scale of the artwork.
Yes.
Look at them side by sides.
It's a bit of a challenge to look at all together. You can stack them up, but then you can't see any detail. So we played around with this quite a bit on how to do this, and it's a challenge.
Obviously, it was a bit of a challenge based upon the votes, I think, from the public, correct? Weren't they about 50/50?
Yes. Oh, and let me, if you were interested, I have those for you. And, you know, this is preferences. So on wall one, it was literally 50/50. We had 151 responses on wall one. 76 was for option one, 75 was for option two. Wall two, a little similar, but it was a little more distinct. We had 153 responses. For option one, we had 62. And for option two, we had 91. So that's about 60% preference on...
Option two.
Option two, wall two.
Which is the first option.
Well, for what it's worth, I agree with the choices.
Anything is much better than what's there right now.
That's true.
And it will look fantastic for our community.
Okay, I'm going to let Claire come up unless there's another question for me. Yeah,
Hello, I'm Claire Santiana. Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. I own Crossroads Art House, and I also have had the pleasure of curating the downtown Victoria Art Walks since they began. So I feel like I've gotten to know a lot of artists in the area, hundreds of artists from the area. And I've been putting my feelers out to the local artists, and there's a lot of interest. So I don't think we're going to have a problem engaging local artists. From the newer artists, younger artists, to more experienced artists, there's a lot of excitement for this project. We also conceptualized a way to include artists besides just painters. So by looking for local photography that matches the renderings, we can bring in photographers, too. For example, the silhouettes on the mariachi. If we find a photograph that works from a local photographer, we can also, you know, let them shine a little
All right. Thank you. Good evening. So we're going to talk about how much all this is going to cost. So what, you know, I'd remind Council, we started this about two years ago. Ms. Solis came to the city manager's office, talked about wanting to put something there. And it's a great idea. We started out thinking that this would initially cost us about $100,000 to do everything. And if, just to take Council back, I came back and did a report last year. And we talked about this, and we want to make sure that this looks good. And we want to make sure that it lasts. And so what, what we're looking at is a high-grade primer base paint. You know, the, the walls will be pressure washed before we paint. It includes the design, the artists, you know, project management of the whole thing. This will all be done by Up Art Studios. And our original budget was $100,000. Okay? That was two years ago. So what I'm here tonight to talk about, and the reason I'm handling this part of it, is because we've seen a slight increase. And what the difference is, really, we could do it this way. But what we would be missing is that final cover coat that will keep it and make it ea, well, one, keep it looking good. But two, make it easier for us to remove any graffiti or dirt from it without destroying or defacing or lightening the paint on the actual painting. And so they've come back to us for that clear coat sealant, including labor, for an additional $15,000. So what I'm asking Council to do tonight is just give me a head nod. The contract is prepared at $100,000. I'd like to go back and, and work with legal to up that to $115,000 to cover the entire project. As said, they would start as soon as, we would get things in motion, as soon as we execute the contract, which would be, I would bring back to you on the 16th. And we hope to have this done in August of this year, before the end of the year. The additional $15,000, I went back and talked to Joel. He's got available as long as it's done this year. And so, just a reminder, this is paid out of the CVB budget, not out of the environmental budget. We just took the lead on working to find the artist, working out with TechStot and everyone else to get the project done. And we will oversee the project through its conclusion. And I'll answer any questions.
Go for it. I'm good with the 15.
Yeah, no, I'm good with 15. Currently, there's a lot of dirt. You, you talked about that. So you kind of already hit that with the clear coat. Is there a maintenance schedule for that? Because obviously, there's going to be dirt coming in. So what about, is there a washing schedule or a maintenance schedule you have to keep this looking good?
We, we will work through a maintenance schedule with them. There is going to be a little bit of maintenance built into the contract after a first year or so. It's going to become ours. It'll be something that community appearance will take care of going forward.
Okay. Yeah, you haven't said anything about the bat issue.
So we're, the, the sealant should protect us from the bats. I will go back to the loop when we clean, when we pressure wash the loop. You know, I guess eating bugs causes some really strong ammonia on, in your urine, and that's the problem we had at the loop. But they do, they have done this all over. They've been all over the state of Texas. They've worked with TechStot. There's a lot of these done in Houston, Fort Worth, San Antonio, and different places that they've done. And they all look pretty nice. So we're hoping we can stay ahead of that. That's the best answer I can give you with dealing with the bats. We cannot mess with the bats. We had that same issue. We had to work with Texas Parks and Wildlife when we did the loop, to make sure we did not disturb any bats.
And how are the artists going to be protected from the droppings when they're underneath there?
Well, I think we'll set up, and we're going to have to block some streets and different things. So we'll do our best to make sure they'll have face masks, I'm sure, since they're painting and other things. Did you have something?
Just on the bat issue, one of the reasons we, at least at this point, we shied away from the Novero underpass, which we had originally looked at. One of the reasons was the surface, it, it's, it's not a great surface to paint on. You couldn't paint that whole thing. But mainly, it was the bats. There's a lot of, there's a lot more bats on Novero, a lot more. There's not even a comparison between them. So it's very minimal bat activity on Laurent. So just to clarify, that, that's another advantage of being at this location.
So the, the columns in the middle?
Will all be a single color.
So they will be?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you need a choice from Council on murals?
I need Council to approve, yes, the murals, so that you're good with me coming back with, I'd rather have that conversation tonight than when I'm standing in front of you with a contract. If there's a change in the mural, or a change in anything else, tonight's the night. We need to discuss that.
So we're all good with the clear coat sealant?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Artwork-wise, I may be the only one that doesn't agree with the recommendations.
I'm fine with the recommendations.
I've already said I'm fine with it.
I'm, I'm okay with what they've recommended, personally.
50/50.
Yeah, I could go literally either way.
So it's three to three?
I'm just kidding.
Break the tie.
Thanks, Josephine. It was Josephine's idea, actually.
Yeah. That's what the community said, too.
Did we hear back from?
I'm good with the wall one recommendation.
We, we did not get anything back from Solis.
But I like the other one. But I like the second one.
Well, can you show them again?
I, I sure do.
Kind of liked.
I like.
So this is the one, I believe, the mayor likes.
So the, the reason I like this one.
No, I like that one.
Okay. The reason I like this one is that cow... The reason I like this one is that cow represents the only registered cow breed that was developed and still maintained in Victoria. And I like the symbolism of that one.
I don't like the humming kingfisher.
Yeah, replace that with an armadillo and I'm in. I don't care for that one.
Show the other, the one that is recommended.
I like that one.
The, the, I, I will say in our, in our discussion, some of it was just, it looks a little different with the branding iron. It's not quite as, as big as it is in this one. And just had multiple different things in the discussion that the team had.
Could we make the cows in this one look like the cows in the other option?
We-
Catches both of them.
We could, to a certain extent. We wouldn't be able to have the one big one in front facing unless we move the cowboys, which if we're going to do that, we might as well be doing the other one.
Why can't you just change the color into the ones in the river?
We can.
That's what I was talking about.
And maybe put the McFadden brand in the background so that everybody knows it's a Bradford.
Okay. We can look at doing that. Now, my question would be, do we need to send that back to council before I bring the contract back? Or would you like to just see a picture of it when I-
I think it's going to be so subtle, you're not going to notice it.
Okay.
Now, let's just do it with the recommendations.
So we have a consensus then to move forward with the $15,000, change the cattle here and put the brand on them?
Yes.
Okay.
There won't be any issue with flooding down in that area, will there?
There is, but the, the clear coat should protect that. And it's, and it's very brief flooding. I mean, when we have flooding down in that deal, it's usually not more than what, Ken, an hour or two at the most? Yeah, at the most.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thanks. With that, we'll conclude our regular session. We're going to take a break for 10 minutes, so 6:20. And we will, I'm sorry, recess into executive session.
The city council will recess for executive session on the second day of May at 6:09 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.